Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. This is our call notification system known as Connect Five. You might have also known it previously when the product was called Alert Now. Sometimes you still call Alert Now, we're asking to re-up that, so we'd appreciate if you would approve that for us.
Move for approval.
Second.
Comments, questions? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Close. It's approved. Item B, exchange of utility easements for Bellamy Elementary School. Appendix H, Mr. Board.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This is a request by a lot owner in Beavardge to reroute a utility easement that currently runs across his lot. We've spoken about this before in closed session. The map is the very last page of the attachment, and you can see from the map where the existing easement goes and where it is proposed to be rerouted. It currently runs straight across the middle of the lot, and as you can see, it's being rerouted around the perimeter. That is a portion of an old utility easement that was acquired back in the 1980s that was never used. There are no pipes in the ground. I've spoken to facility planning. We don't believe that it will ever need to be used by the school board because the utilities are provided from a different direction or a different part of that same easement. It doesn't need to extend that far anymore. And just in case there was ever any need of the school board, which is highly unlikely, we are retaining the smaller portion that goes around the perimeter, which would be sufficient for to place a pipe in if that was ever necessary.
And was this the lot where he couldn't sell it due to this problem?
He couldn't sell it because the easement runs across his lot. And so the school board is giving up the portion that runs across the middle of the lot and exchanging that for the part that runs around the perimeter as an even trade.
Move for approval.
Comments, questions? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Close. Approved. Item C, procurement plan, child nutrition program.
I'm sorry, Mr. Chairman. Actually, procedurally, there are two specific things the board needs to approve, which would be the resolution that goes along with that and the actual relocation agreement. So there were two things the board needed to approve, and I just wanted to manage to be clear that the board was approving both.
Do you need to read the resolution?
I think that's up to the board.
Okay. Okay, so it's understood then that we're approving both, the resolution and the... Okay.
Okay.
That was my motion.
And there was a second, correct? Who was...
Yeah.
We voted. So it's approved. Okay. Now, is that it?
Yes, sir.
Item C, procurement... If I could say the word.
Procurement.
Mr. Hans?
Procurement plan. This is the child nutrition procurement plan. The board approved the procurement plan originally in 2010. Subsequent to that, with the approval of DPI in 2013, since the majority of the procurement plan were procedures, it was removed from policy 4410 to simplify 4410 and have it stand alone. And the procurement procedure stood alone as procedures for child nutrition procurement. Subsequently, the U.S. Department of Agriculture in 2014 promulgated some changes to the procurement plan, and those were implemented. And now, we need to bring it before the board again because child nutrition is undergoing an audit, a federal audit, which they do every five years, and that's occurring in May of this year. And part of that audit requires original signatures or current signatures for the procurement plan. So we're presenting the procurement plan back to the board with the changes that were promulgated by the agricultural department in 2014 for the board's consideration for approval.
Move for approval.
Second. Comments, questions?
I'm sorry, Mr. Hayes, I've noticed two minor changes I'm going to recommend to this before the board approves it. If you look on the very first page of the procurement plan itself, which is the second or third page in... Yes, right there, on paragraph A at the top, where it used to say 90,000 and above, and that shows it being changed to more than 90,000. That needs to stay as it was, 90,000 and above. And also...
So the "and above" would not have the strike through?
Right. And then, further along in the agreement in section E, there's a proposed change to subsection 1C where the word "service" is stricken out, and in its place it says "reason for non-competitive procurement." That change does not need to be made, so it needs to be left as is in regard to that particular subsection.
Say "service"?
Yeah, just say "service."
Okay.
And I've spoken with Child Nutrition Director Ms. Smith, and she's okay with those changes.
I'm moved to adopt it as amended.
Second.
Okay. Any other comments or questions? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Close. Let's see. Next item, item D, Bellamy Elementary School painting contract. Appendix J, Mr. Hans.
Yes, Ms. Chairman, request that you approve the painting contract for Bellamy Elementary School.
Move for approval.
Second.
How much is getting painted?
Of the interior of the building.
The whole building?
Yes.
Okay, good.
Any other questions? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Close. Approved. Item G, Bedford University High School George West Building renovation.
Didn't you just skip E and F?
No, they got...
They went with B.
Okay, I'm sorry.
For the George West Building renovations, appendix M, Mr. Hans.
Yes, Ms. Chairman, thank you. Request that you approve the bids for the George West Building, University High School.
Move for approval.
Second.
Questions? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Close. Approved. Item H, change order for New Hanover High School George West Building renovations, appendix N, Mr. Hans.
Yes, Ms. Chairman, request that the board consider and approve the change order for the George West Building, University High School.
Move for approval. Second.
Questions?
I mean, we just approved the...
Yes.
...renovation. Why now the...
Yes, Mr. Higgins, if you'll recall, we had discussed this some time ago. The mechanical contractor who was the low bid for this particular contractor...
Oh, okay.
For... We would like him to change that because of poor performance on a prior project with us.
That's enough. I understand. I just...I remember you talking about, telling me about it, but I didn't know that's what this was. Okay.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Close. Approved. Item I, bids for Sidbury Road Complex Improvements, appendix O, Mr. Hans.
Yes, Ms. Chairman, thank you. Request that the board consider and approve the bids for the Sidbury Road Complex improvements.
Move for approval.
Second.
Questions?
Yes, sir, just one. Mr. Hans. Could you talk just a little about the scope of work for this?
This is going to be a couple of different things. We're going to build the northern bus garage in which we will house the buses, and this will be behind the school. Then we will also be renovating the school for College Park to be able to occupy it as a school, as a swing space when College Park is replaced.
And is there any...are there any other bids expected with this project?
I'm sorry?
Are there any other bids expected with this project? Will this bid complete the funding for the work you want to do?
I believe so. Does this...the mobile units will be there. We'll have mobile classroom units that will be there, placed there for College Park because there's not enough classrooms inside the building, and so that will be additional that will come to the board.
Thank you.
Actually, it'll be modular units rather than individual mobile units, a couple of modular units.
Of course, and then long range, there'll be additional changes once it becomes a middle school, correct? Once we get through with the elementary constructions that we're doing and then convert it to a middle school, then I guess we go through a...
But none of that is funded at this time.
Right, but that would be way down the road. Any other questions? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Close. Approved. Item J, bids for EA Laney High School Phase Two Abatement Replacement, appendix P, Mr. Hans.
Yes, Ms. Chairman, request that the board approve the asbestos abatement for Laney High School.
Move for approval.
Second. Questions? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Close. Approved. Item K, dedication of right-of-way to North Carolina Department of Transportation at the Sidbury Road Complex, appendix Q, Mr. Hans.
Yes, Ms. Chairman, request that the board approve the right-of-way dedication for Sidbury Road.
Move for approval.
Second. Questions? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Close. Approved. Item L, amendment to access utility and drainage easement agreement for Porter's Neck Elementary School, appendix R, Mr. Hans.
Yes, Ms. Chairman, request that the board approve the amendment for the access and utility and drainage easement for Porter's Neck.
Move for approval. Second.
Questions?
What necessitated the change, Mr. Hans, for this?
Well, this is...this basically aligns it with the way it actually is. We've had the three-party agreement between the Cape Fear Public Utility Authority, the developer, and us, and this actually aligns it with the way it's actually going to be on the ground now. So, did that answer your question?
Well, I don't know that I need further explanation. If I have a question, I'll ask you later, but thank you. Appreciate it. Mr. Chairman, if I may also, we had sent this amendment to the developer that we purchased the property from and asked them, because they're the other party to the agreement, they need to sign it, and I haven't heard back as to whether it's exactly like they want it. We think it will be because their engineers have approved the map showing where the easements are being moved to. So what I would ask is that the board, if you're inclined, is to approve this, but give the superintendent authority with your general counsel's approval to make minor changes to the wording of the easement agreement, as long as it doesn't change the location of the easements. If there are any major changes proposed, we would bring that to you back. We would bring it back to the board. So we would ask that you approve it, subject to the superintendent and your general counsel, me being given authority to make minor changes to the wording of the document, as long as they're consistent with the agreement.
Who made that motion?
Me.
Is that agreeable?
Yes.
Okay. Any other questions? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Close. Approved. Item M, utility easement agreement for Porter's Neck Elementary School, appendix S, Mr. Hans.
Yes, Ms. Chairman, request that you approve the utility easement for Porter's Neck Elementary School with Cape Fear Public Utility Authority.
Move for approval.
Second. Questions? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Close. Approved. Item N, resolution of support for educational initiatives, appendix T, Mr. Higgins.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, this is the matter that Ms. Edelman spoke to you about. To give just a little bit of background, she and some other members of the League of Women Voters met with Mr. Sherrill and myself to develop a resolution in support of education in North Carolina. You have on your agenda tonight that resolution, and basically where it...what it does is it says that we ask the North Caroli...we, the New Hanover County Board of Education, call for the New Hanover...North Carolina General Assembly to fully fund K-12 public education and reject the trend towards shifting educational spending to the local counties. That New Hanover County Board of Education calls upon the General Assembly to develop and implement a plan to raise teacher pay so as to make North Carolina competitive with the surrounding states. That the New Hanover County Board of Education calls upon the General Assembly to pass House Bill 803, an act to increase the weight of school growth to 50% in calculation of school performance scores. And New Hanover County Board of Education calls upon the General Assembly to grant local LEAs control over their school calendars.
Okay.
And I move that we adopt this resolution.
I second the motion.
Do we have a motion in a second? Questions?
Yeah, I have some questions. I'm not sure...I mean, I'm kind...I'm with you on the increasing the weight of school growth to 50% in the calculation of school performance scores. The discussion about granting local LEAs control over school calendars, I think that's definitely something that we support. The concern I have is the resolution to raise teacher pay to make it competitive with surrounding states. I think...I think that's a moving target, and it's difficult to...it's difficult to define. And it doesn't take into consideration quite a few...quite a few things such as, you know, tax liability or tax, you know, local taxes and things like that. So I'm just very uncomfortable with this resolution, to be quite honest. The...what is meant by fully funding K-12 public education? What do you mean by that? I mean, you're...on the one hand, you're saying, "We want you to fully fund education, but we also want local control." So in a sense, you're essentially saying, "We want authority, but we don't want responsibility." That's the way I read this resolution.
Well, I mean, I think the gist of this is to say that what has happened is the state of North Carolina has begun shifting the cost of public education from the state, which has historically since 1930 been responsible for public education, to the counties. I mean, we're asking for $70 million from New Hanover County to adequately provide education. If you look at what was being spent in 2008, and I went back and looked, 2008, what was being spent on K-12 education? I know that Representative Davis talked about that we were seventh in the nation, but I don't think that...I think if you just pull out K-12 education, we're way down the 40s. So what was being spent in 2008 and what was spent last year, which is what, seven years? Last year, they spent $200 million more than they spent in 2008. And what we have seen is our percentage of demand from the local county has continued to grow. And all we're asking is that the state do a better job in providing for many of the things that we believe is imperative in quality education, if that makes sense.
Well, and I understand that, but what you're talking about...you're talking about a period of...2008 was a recession hit, and so, you know...
Well, it started with 2007 and '08. That's when...that was the last good year.
Right. And so, you know, during that timeframe, we saw a significant dip in funding all across the board. The federal government, through the no-child...or racist top funding, basically injected a lot of money in to try to shore up the budget. And so we've had...the state has had to absorb a lot of that funding. And so the fact that we've been able to sort of come out of that and we're now above where we were is actually a good thing. I mean...
Well, it's good, but it's marginally better. And the thing is, when you...last year, the state thought they were going to be $300 million short. They came up $400 million to the good. This year, supposedly, they're already 200 and...nearly $250 million better off this year than they were last year. And we're not talking about...well, it does...I think it does say "fully fund." You're right about that, but all we're calling is for the...I mean, if you'd rather change the wording, but we're asking for the state to better provide funding so counties do not have to supplement what the state should have been given. And so, I mean, you know, I'm open to suggestions about how this could be reworded to accommodate that.
Well, I'm with you, and I don't want this to be viewed as me saying I don't think we should fully fund education or that we...you know, I agree. I think teachers need to be paid more. I'm 110% with that, but I think it's a structural issue. I think we have a system that is extremely top-heavy. And so, to me personally, this is my personal belief, is, you know, eliminating the bureaucracy at the top is what will create a lot of, you know, will eliminate a lot of the, you know, funding, the barriers to the funding that can push down to the local level. So to me, this, without providing the...we think this is where the issue is, and that will help us to, you know, better fund public education. Without that piece, I can't support this.
When you say "top-heavy," you're talking about in Raleigh?
I'm talking about specifically...you want me to identify specifically? The Department of Public Instruction and the State Board of Education. The two most useless bureaucratic nightmares that I have ever come across, and those two departments need to be shut down, as far as I'm concerned, shut down immediately. They are a waste of taxpayer money, and they are just creating a nightmare situation for every LEA in the state.
And I don't necessarily disagree with you on that, but I don't see where that affects when you look at South Carolina, Georgia, Tennessee, and Virginia, the states that took us. They all pay their teachers more than we pay. So even with what you're saying is true, I see nothing wrong with this wording in that we want to be competitive. I'd rather be at the top of the list rather than at the bottom.
Well, but you have to look at...every state funds their public education system differently. It depends on the funding structure. Some...North Carolina funds their...we probably spend...and Dr. Markley probably could speak to this maybe a little better than I can, as far as the percentage of state funds that we utilize versus local and federal, as to other states. But you have to take into consideration those variables of other states. It's very difficult to compare states with each other, and, you know, you have to sort of bring them all down to the same level in order to make those comparisons. You know, it's...we can't compare North Carolina to...I mean, and I know we're talking about, you know, surrounding states. We can't compare North Carolina to New York State.
But are you saying then that South Carolina pays their teachers more, not because of what the state does, but because the counties in South Carolina fund higher than, say, New Hanover County funds us? I mean, is that where...I mean, is that what you're saying, I guess?
It's a possibility.
Because I know it does vary from state to state.
It's a possibility, but what I'm saying is we're...what we're saying is that, you know, we want to be more competitive, but we really don't know why other counties...why they're able to pay their...you know, what their funding structure is in order to, you know, to...we haven't done that comparison. So to me, I can't...I can't say, or I can't support a resolution that says...you know, I don't know that South Carolina is actually paying their teachers...
They pay about $1,000, on average, about $1,000.
Okay, but if they're paying their teachers $1,000 more, but if their property taxes are higher, is their take-on pay any better? I mean, I know that...I know that when you go down, you know, I know Texas was talking about, you know, at one point, they were trying to pull teachers down to Texas. Well, their property taxes were a lot higher there. You have to look at, you know, what their discretionary...what their take-on pay would actually be when you factor in all of those, you know, all of those, you know, those local situations that, you know, ultimately, they're not taking home any more than they would, say, here in New Hanover County. So, like I said, it's...you have to take all of these variables into consideration in order to make a comparison.
I would suggest, I think we agree on the majority of this resolution. Let me wordsmith it a little bit and bring it back on May 1st.
That's okay. That's fine with me.
That's a good suggestion.
Because I hate for us to get tied up on one or two issues when there's obviously the vast majority of this resolution I think we can come to consensus on.
And I would much rather pass it on and get Adam's vote.
All right, so I'll bring it back first minute.
And we certainly appreciate the support from our community leaders.
Yes.
You agree with that?
Had someone made a motion?
I made a motion, but...
You want to withdraw?
I will withdraw it, and we'll...
Table it.
You know, I'm not going to force a vote.
Let's just table it for the May meeting.
Come back on the motion.
Was that the only area that...the way that's worded, as far as being competitive with the surrounding states?
I think I can make a...
Well, I mean...
Ms. Kova, why don't you email the board your concerns? Let us look at it. Let us get the superintendent's suggestions from the board, and take care of it that way.
I would be happy to.
Thank you.
Because I think there are some...there are a few "whereas's" in here that are probably misstatements, but I'd be happy to do that.
Well, another option in addition to that would be that this resolution comes from the League of Women Voters, and this board accepts it without taking a position on it. Why would I want to do something like that? The reason I would suggest that is we are actively working with state government, state officials, and we're trying to gain their support with funding on numerous levels. And as Mr. Higgins said, they don't always agree with the statistics that are showing up. So I think it would be wise to reword it, and reword it in such a way that it's not abrasive to the very people that we're seeking help from. Thank you.
But I don't...I mean, I will say, I don't find it abrasive. I just think we just ask that they do it, and, you know, the one change that could be made is that the first resolution could be that North Carolina General Assembly adequately fund K-12 instead of...if you don't like, you know, if the word "fully" is in, then "adequately", and let them define what's adequate funding.
I think they already have.
Well, they may have, but at least, you know, we're just telling them we don't necessarily agree with them.
Yes, and we need...they need them to be realistic with them.
And I'll go along with the rewording, but I really don't see anything abrasive. I mean, you know, we're stating facts.
I don't see it as being abrasive, but, I mean, you know, I would like...
I don't think we're going to solve it tonight. That's why I suggest that we do this by email.
Okay. I think you withdrew it, right, Ms. Higgins?
Yeah, I'll withdraw it.
Okay. Item O, Curriculum Course Guide, appendix U, Dr. Smith.
Yes, I am bringing before the board this evening a recommendation for changes to the 2016-2017 curriculum course guide. We would like to add an on-level service learning course at New Hanover High School. I believe it was last year, we had a presentation for the honors-level course at New Hanover High School, and we've had a lot of success with that, and we've had a request from the school to expand that course offering. We also are bringing additional information regarding the IB courses that will be available for the 2016-2017 school year at Hogarth High School. And then for our middle school program, we are looking to add classical piano at Holly Shelter Middle School. And we have with us tonight representation from each of those schools, should there be any questions.
Move for approval.
Is there a second?
Second.
Questions? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Close. It's approved. Thank you. Item P, Soul Source Resolution with Castle Learning, appendix V, Dr. Smith.
Yes, we would ask the board's approval for the Soul Source Resolution for Castle Learning.
Move for approval. Second.
Questions? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Close. Approved. Item Q, 2015-16 Calendar Revisions, appendix W, Dr. Smith.
Yes, thank you. The final item that I have for this evening, we are asking for amendment to the traditional school calendars due to implement weather. There was a school day that we missed, October the 5th, I believe it was, and per... October the fifth, I believe it was, and per our process, we will add that missed school day to the end of the calendar, so we're just amending the calendars to reflect that day, additional workday at the end of the traditional school calendars.
Move for approval. Second.
Any questions? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Posed. Approved. Item R-
Thank you.
Thank you. Policy thirty-one, twenty, fund balance, Dr. Markley.
This was reviewed in policy and would, puts our fund balance policy in line with what our budget recommendation is, but asks for approval, first reading tonight, and then second reading in May, along with the approval of the budget.
And I would ask Dr. Markley that we send a copy out to the full board since only the policy committee members salva proposal.
We'll take care of it.
Okay, thank you.
Move for approval?
Second.
Did you already make it?
I thought it was on first, first reading.
First reading.
I didn't think so.
Oh, it's, mm-mm.
I didn't think so.
I'm sorry.
Just for a first reading. Oh, okay.
Okay, first reading.
Disregard my motion.
Thank you.
Save it for next month.
We'll, we'll save it. Uh, next on the agenda, item thirteen, call to the audience, we had no one sign up for our non-agenda items. Item fourteen, no close session, that's it.
That's where I got it from.
I did too.
Uh, item fifteen, any correspondence, any board members want to share, Mr. Schell?
Yes, sir.
Ms. Kavanagh?
No, thank you.
Mr. Higgins?
No.
Ms. Koval?
Well, I, I would like to say that, yes, we were invited to the Fine Arts Center at Cape Fear Community College to meet with the Board of Trustees for, um, an information session, and it was really informative, and it gets an opportunity for this board, as well as the Board of Trustees, to work together, and certainly, they are aware of our CTE high school needs, and so it was a very worthwhile event.
Very, they did a very good job, I think everyone enjoyed it, it was good for both boards. Item sixteen, under announcements, item A, members of the New Hanover County Board of Education will attend the Isaiah Festival School Kickoff Visit, April seventh, nine a.m. Event will be held at Ogden Elementary School on Middle Sound Road. Item B, the New Hanover County School Student Advisory Breakfast will be held on Wednesday, April twenty-seventh, eight a.m., here in the Board Center. Item C, the next regular meeting of the board is scheduled for Tuesday, May third. Any work sessions coming up that you know of or anything?
None at this time.
So right now, that's what we have on the calendar. Any other announcements? Anything on that?
We will have a policy committee meeting prior to that, but the time has not been established.
Okay. Uh, next item on the agenda, item seventeen, adjournment, is there a motion?
I move that we adjourn. Second.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Thank you, we are adjourned.
Ms. Kavanagh, we-